So I have a motion from Joe Masi to open the public hearing. Second from Terry Hammond. Please signify that they're not.
Aye.
And that motion carries and the public hearing is now open to discuss the heating system for the elementary school building. Before I start going away, Philian, I just want to give a little bit of historical background as part of due diligence by the school board. Starting back, I believe it was 2016, about four years ago, we received a letter from the state regarding our heating system, our piping from oil tanks to the heating system that was no longer in compliance, which began investigations into different heating systems or upgrades we might need to make along the way. We've investigated everything from biomass to dual fuel systems to tie both schools together. We also had a consultant come in and look at energy efficiency envelope project that would tie in windows, lighting, new heating system, and it just didn't seem to materialize as there wasn't enough savings for them. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, we have been working or at least looking at this for over four years before we come forward with what Wayne's going to present to you as our kind of what we're going to bring to the public via Warren article. And the public will decide. It's not, you know, we brought the experts in to decide what is in our best interest and what would be the most efficient for the school system, for the community. So without further ado, Wayne, I'd like to introduce Wayne Philian. He's the engineer of the project and he's done many projects within our school system. Phil, give an explanation of where we're at in the system that we're bringing forward and then be able to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well, as mentioned, I'm Wayne Philian. I'm with Yeton Associates. We have offices in Littleton and in New Hampshire. And we were secured by the Linwood School District to take a look at the heating plant for this facility, but not just the heating plant. In fact, one of the bigger items with respect to efficient operation is the control system. The control system in this building is currently pneumatic, so it's compressed air that pushes through plastic tubing to make dampers and valves move in response to thermostats or whatever it's answering to. Obviously, that's an antiquated technology at this point in time, and so with an eye towards gaining efficiency and operation, we've presented the use of a direct digital control system. The boiler plant is sectional cast iron boilers. They're currently oil fired. As was mentioned, the oil system here at the elementary school has been under the state's microscope for multiple years. The piping between the tank in the building is no longer in compliance with the way they want fuel oil underground piping protected. And also, and perhaps most important, there's a day tank and a transfer pump in the existing boiler room today that isn't compliant and has been singled out in particular by the state. The new requirements are double wall day tanks. They carry a lot of expense. So where I'm headed with that explanation is that the oil system as it stands today is certainly under state scrutiny. And so we took the liberty, or not the liberty, we took the due diligence of taking a look at alternate fuel systems. As mentioned, at times we were looking at both facilities, the high school and the elementary school. When the focus became the elementary school, we proposed use of LP gas. Boiler technology relative to LP gases dramatically improved over the past 10, 15 years. And so we're able to offer better efficiency using LP gas units than oil. However, the school was interested in having the alternative of oil. So if I was to unroll the drawings as they stand today, they'd actually show a few oil system that's above ground using dual fuel burners. In the last meeting, at least school board members will recall that given the cost savings of eliminating the oil portion, it was significant. I believe that was entertained and people felt that would be a good way to go. So if towards that, we're trying to arrive at a number to post as a Warren article. If it's approved, we then reconcile the drawings to show exactly the last defined scope of work and we put that out to competitive bid. Besides the boiler plant and the control system, we're also proposing the replacement of two failed air conditioning systems. So that cost is in the contract. And so, again, as I mentioned, we put the scope of work together in cooperation with the school district and we were charged with getting a number that was a proven number to assure that whatever we post for people to vote on and match isn't just a number that the engineer invented, but in fact has been tested through true pricing. We partnered with a very reputable contractor and got a number. I presented that to the school board three weeks ago. And at that point in time, we talked about some of the component costs that went into that value. Long story short, we settled out about $600,000 as to where a high efficiency LP gas boiler plant, replacement of two air conditioning units, pulling the existing underground storage tank, getting rid of the associated piping and so on, demolition work, site work, cutting, patching, all of that equaled a total contract, projected contract amount of about $600,000.
Excellent. At this time, are there any questions? I don't know if any board members have any questions. We can just open directly to the public if you have any meeting. Unless, do you guys have any questions? Public?
Wayne, do you have a more bigger breakdown on Division 15 for us, what the air condition is there and the controls?
Yep. The air conditioning component cost was $20,000.
Okay.
The control number was, I'm sure I get this right, was $140,000.
And that's all under Division 15, I see.
That's right.
Yep.
Is that by using the existing boiler or are you jerking that right out of there?
Taking the existing boilers out and replacing with new.
You don't think them are worthwhile trying to repair?
They're sectional cast iron. I believe this building was built in 99?
One.
91. So although...
That ain't old for a boiler.
Well, sectional cast irons have a very, very long life. I'll give you that.
Yep.
To convert those to gas would be a bit questionable. They've been firing on number two product. Their cast iron and fire boxes become happy seeing that flame, that residue, et cetera. I'm not saying it can't be done. It certainly is done, but it would just be tough to guarantee that firing those with LP gas is, you know, going to allow a longer life of those boilers.
How much pressure are you running in them?
Those are low pressure boilers. 25 pounds, 30 pounds of water.
Yeah, well, that's nothing. But talk of this gas, you hear so much about these gases that happen and people blowing up with gas and all that, you know?
Well...
Well, you look at the paper every day, something getting blown up.
Well, I'm not telling you it doesn't happen, but certainly the industry's, there's multiple safety features that are included as part of the boilers. Nothing's 100% foolproof, but certainly the industry has spent immense dollars on research and development and part of that has been safety controls and safety features.
So how much storage gas would you have on the property at any time?
We've proposed three 1,000 gallon tanks that would go right out here beyond...
Above the ground?
Yes. Yep, we're far enough away from building and property lines. Above ground is common use. You just need to account for the cold weather and make sure that you can reach your vaporization needs.
You're going to have a vaporizer with it too?
No vaporizer.
No vaporizer?
No. With three 1,000 gallon tanks, we have adequate volume so that even in the deep of cold with 20% level in the tank, we aren't threatened meeting the boiler demand.
Well, I saw the paper across the street here, we had gas in all those units up there. And we had a tank car on the ground, I don't know how many gallons, over 10, 15,000 gallons.
Right.
And that, we had to have vaporizer on that and that wouldn't even take care of it.
Right.
It kept on freezing up.
Right. If you overdraw your rate of vaporization, that is what happens. You freeze up, so...
Yeah, but there's always moisture in that.
That's...
Well, I was over at Bernie's, I worked there for a few years too, and we had a vaporizer on that one too. And that was three or four tanks above the ground.
Right.
And with only one boiler not firing that much and shit freezing up too.
Well, you're talking about...
We had to go babysit that and put the water to it, so...
Yep. Use of LP gas in above ground tanks is very common. It truly is a calculation of what your demand is versus the volume you have available in the tanks. That's how we arrived at three 1,000 gallon tanks.
Anybody else?
Would the three 1,000 gallon tanks, Wayne, during peak season, how many visits a week or a month do you expect for deliveries?
With the three 1,000 gallon tanks, you'd probably have, you may have two fills in January and two in February. Other than that, I don't even know if it'd be monthly.
So on your domestic water, is that going to be off those boilers? You'd have to run them in the summer too?
Actually, this building has very little domestic hot water demand since the kitchens at the high school. So although there's a number of sinks and classrooms here, you can appreciate that the demand is very low. There's a electric water heater in the boiler room today that was installed for summertime use. And I believe they shut the boilers down during the summer season currently. We would be continuing with that. The LP gas plant would be used for heating and we can generate domestic hot water off from that as well for the winter months. And then in the summer, they'd resort back to the existing electric.
The control system that you're proposing, Wayne, how complicated is that? Can the normal person operate it or do you have to have some sort of education in it? It sounded kind of complicated on that.
You certainly need training. The days of a single switch causing a simple reaction, unfortunately, those days are gone. But the reason for the complexity obviously is the name of energy management. A control function used to be when your thermostat hits 70, a valve closed and we were happy with that. Today, given microprocessing capability, programming capability, we're able to schedule schools so that during February vacation, you're holding reduced temperatures and so on. To your point, the systems have certainly been made more user friendly, but when you get your energy management system and it's in our requirements in the specifications, you're owed numerous hours of training by the control installer. And then it's not only the training because you get eight hours of training, that group drives away and immediately you have questions. So to remove the questions and the panic, we have criteria for follow-up. And of course, the system's under warranty. So for that first year of warranty, the control contractor's back to deal with any issues and it's not uncommon that part of that is continued training.
You've installed some of these.
Oh, yes.
Are there any companies around in the local area that, where it's sophisticated that deal and just that running them for you?
You can get a service contract and get assistance from the installing group. Obviously, that's part of their business plan and they love that. But equally, it is meant to be a system that people train on in the end user is able to manipulate and work with. The control groups, nine out of 10 times, are interconnected so that they don't have to send a technician to the site for anything other than a mechanical or electrical snafu. If it's sharing a screen, seeing the issue, trying to figure out why room 25 isn't holding 70, then that can be a shared screen between the onsite operator and the control group that installs the system. And if it's a web-based browser system, you're simply working over the net.
What did we shave off? So I know the original quote was 670 and we're at 600. What was shaved off? What was the 70?
The 60 was related to doing away with the oil portion of the boiler plant, which got rid of an outside building to hold two 300 gallon tanks and associated piping and other things. And then the control value, there was some heft in there that I felt we could trim a bit. Well, I didn't. I spoke with the control contractor that had given the sub number and there were some extra control valves and other things that had been carried. So essentially, in the last meeting that I attended with the school board, 70,000 disappeared from the contractor's number, which got us to 600. I hope that's accurate to everyone's memory.
The air conditions, Wayne, they have nothing to do with the heating plant. You're just bundling it into this project?
That's right.
So the air conditioners could happen this year regardless, if you did the heating system or not?
Right.
Except for the controls?
The two air conditioning systems that we're talking about are failed today and they run a refrigerant that won't be supported down the road. So it seemed like the appropriate time to address those air conditioning systems and they are integrated with the control system as well.
Down the road, if other, say more air conditioners or something were needed, would they integrate with the control system?
Yeah. The, you've got to appreciate the control systems are just potential. So it's like buying a computer. It isn't limited to just so many functions. Somebody that's very, very tech savvy can expand that platform and do a lot of things. And if they're limited like me, they check their emails, so...
So the air conditioners could be installed this year even without the control system?
They could be, but the, the control component cost on those air conditioning systems is relatively short money. You're already buying scheduling capability, viewing capability, graphic screens to show you what's happening. So we're buying the platform that can do a lot. So to add the air conditioning systems to it isn't a big cost.
I guess my point was, where they have no air now, say if the heating system didn't go, they could still do the air so that people could be comfortable in the building without having a total control system.
Yes.
Okay. How about the piping from the tank that's there now to the building? Did you have a number if they were to replace that?
Well, I do and it's a big number because of the day tank that's in the boiler plant today. The transfer pump and the day tank that's in the boiler plant today can't stay. That's not compliant. So you need to go to double wall. That's where a lot of the expense is, but you'd be $30,000 to $50,000 to do the piping to the, to the building. And you'd still have a tank that's 30-plus years under the ground and it's currently registered with the state is over 20. So, I mean, it's on their scrutiny list.
So with the state like that, the only thing they complain about is the fuel and nothing about the stack?
The chimney that is there today is dealing with number two product.
Yeah, I mean, but the state haven't got you for air quality, they just got you for the oil side.
Oh, yeah. We're not, we're not near the threshold of where they're worried about emissions from the chimney. We're not challenged on that, or I should say that the school district isn't challenged on that. But the state keeps tabs on underground fuel oil tanks because they are a liability. And at one time, double wall with inode protection and piping run in a certain way was acceptable and certainly that time was 1991 when the building was constructed. Now DES has a whole set of new rules around ground protection.
Where are those tanks located on the property?
Right outside the boiler room. There's a manhole right outside the boiler room. Thank you. Right there.
Wayne, could I ask a worst case scenario? Just say for whatever reason, the voters do not want to do this right now. What are we looking at for price, just piping? The transfer pump, the piping?
30 to 50.
And the line, 30 to 50? I know people are going to ask that, so I just wanted to have an answer in case.
Right. But they need to appreciate that you've set a new manway in connection protection dome on top of...
An old tank.
An old tank.
No, I can do this.
So I can't tell you the old tank's going to go another 10 years.
But I, we don't know it won't, but we don't know it will.
Exactly.
I mean, that's, and the cost is 600, that didn't include the removal of the tank, or?
Complete removal, yes.
Site removed, or?
Yes, all the site work, groundwork, that's all in the number.
Were those numbers from Heber also?
Yes. Heber was kind enough to partner with us and look at it as, they're a construction manager, so they were able to get all trades. So we've got everything covered in that number. Obviously, I need to give you a safe number for the town to view and for it to be legitimate. If it passes, we reconcile the drawings to where they match exactly what we've agreed on, LP gas, boilers and so on, and then it goes to competitive bid.
What's the life expectancy on the control systems, the longevity of those?
The control systems, like anything else, electronic, it's upgrades. So the system itself doesn't have an expiration date. The control upgrades would start being offered in year three and so on. It's software upgrades.
But based on your experience and what you've seen?
Oh, the digital systems in their infancy, they were probably a 15-year life, but now we're 20, 25 years.
In your study, Wayne, did you look at the high school at all?
We had looked at the high school numerous times to the extent of, did a combined boiler plant make sense? Did a alternate fuel such as chips make sense? So we looked at the campus holistically with both schools and then broke it down into components and given the boiler room layouts, oil tanks, all of that, it makes more sense to treat them independently. And the elementary school is the one that's being considered this year.
But at, looking at that, did you have an opinion on when the voters or taxpayers are going to be looking at a major upgrade down there? We've got some reports that say that the boiler down there is grossly undersized, so it's so inefficient. Is it that much undersized that it could potentially heat this building?
Undersized or oversized?
Oversized, I'm sorry.
Yes. We wouldn't want to take that boiler and extend its capacity over here. That boiler owes you nothing. It's given you many, many years of service.
Well, I guess that's a second part of it. My question is, what do the, what can the taxpayers expect down there? Do you have any opinion on it or you didn't look at it that? I don't want to put you in a spot to say something you don't, you don't work, you don't hire to talk about.
I dealt with Linwood schools for a long time. I've looked at the high school time and time again, from how to upgrade the heating plant to how to improve controls. So not unlike the journey we went through here, but that's even more vintage over there. So, I mean, eventually, an upgrade contract will have to be produced for that school.
But just for the taxpayers, Mo, would you, I'm going to throw a crazy number, 20 years?
Oh, no.
Or five years?
Closer to...
I know the answer, I just wanted to hear it.
Yeah, closer to five.
And that obviously will be a bigger project.
Yeah. You break it down into bite sizes or you say, we're going to take one shot at getting this done in 2025 and not have to worry about it hopefully till 2045 or whatever. It's like anything else, it's planning.
Do you have any other questions?
Just, Wayne, I know that somebody had asked, is there a chance to give any of your proposal, even the proposals, to you at the S.A.U. office or anything?
Yep, those are there. Deb had requested those.
Thank you.
I brought two sets. People need to recognize that we haven't jumped and removed the oil and done some of the other things that I've explained allowed us to get to 600. If you warrant 600 and it passes, we then immediately reconcile those against the final program, put them out to competitive bid. And as I explained to you last time, when we go to competitive bid, a buyout number should be better than what's been posted on the Warren article. It doesn't do me any favors to miss law.
Is there a written scope of work, Wayne, that some people, be available to people so they could understand it better than looking at a set of drawings?
Well, there isn't one that, I don't think the school district has one at the moment. It's not a big deal to put a... It's not a big deal to put a bullet list item to-
Because you're not doing unit heaters or anything like that.
The unit heaters are getting new controls. There will be people in there removing pneumatic controls, fixing the seals on dampers, and their hands will be in there. But when they disappear, that univentilator is going to look just like it does in the classroom today because all of the good work is going to be invisible inside, and we're not touching the cabinet or the coils.
Anything else? Hearing no questions, accept the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I think a motion of closing of the vote.
Closing, closing, yes, thank you. Thanks, Joe. All in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you. That is five thirty-seven.
I don't think there is one, Wayne. We've got a budget meeting, if you want to stay with that.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a, a public forum hearing. And what I'd like to do is postpone that as we gather more information as you guide through the use of condoms for basketball hoops. So if you guys are okay with that, unless there's anybody that feels strongly that we should open that, or we could discuss the hoops, I guess, later in the agenda during continuing business.
You can do that under continuing, it's not on there, but it's continuing business anyway, so you could have that.
I know that, I think, was not looking at to get some other quotes.
Yeah, and Dan had some ideas too, so we want to make sure we get all the input and everything.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Vance. I've got a second. Thanks, Joe. Do you have any questions, concerns, corrections? Hearing none, all in-
I thought, I thought he said the other one. It's just the fifth line in our educational focus. Says, "They will be placed near the woods and will be surrounded by a fence, just to be surrounded." And on the last page, it's probably, the last one, it says, "Do what do is planned, so do what do."
Joe, can you say that again, please, on the first one?
Yeah, the fifth line in our educational focus, it says, "They will be placed near the woods and will be surrounded by a fence, just to be surrounded."
Yep, thank you.
And on the last page, it's probably German. Said, "Do what do is planned," I think it should say, "Do what do is planned."
Thanks, Joe.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Any else? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes with the corrections, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the January eighth, two thousand twenty meeting. Thank you, Brian. You got a second? Thank you, Joe. Any questions, concerns, corrections on, on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Abstentions.
I'll abstain as well. And that motion carries. And the next item is the approval of the non-public minutes of January eighth, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion.
Thanks, Vance, a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions?
Abstentions.
All right. Any comments, comments?
No. The only, the only thing I had was a, a reminder for anyone, any board members who are from a, a Mayhem just School Board's location. You want to know the delicate assembly was this Saturday. So if anybody would like to go, they just give Janette a buzz tomorrow and she'll send it up. But it is, it's an all-day affair, so.
Okay, reports.
Well, there's a lot of stuff on the budget later in the meeting, but, and they, it's Tuesday. So the, the manifest will be out hopefully Wednesday or Thursday, AP checks, so I'll let them send you an email.
Have you been getting signatures in time? I know it's been kind of a struggle.
Sometimes it's a struggle.
Judy, superintendent's report.
Okay, so our upcoming dates, I'm going to skip over that whole first section there. The upcoming dates, you have next week, January twenty-ninth, you have the bond hearing, that's at five o'clock. Wayne Philion will be there to answer any questions, and we're putting together any questions that have come up since the last time he was here so that he will be prepared to answer those as well, so if you have any, so if you have any questions.
How is this thinking maybe addressing?
Yep, that's one of them.
Okay.
So if anybody else can think of any other questions that they may want answered, I can email them to me and I'll, I'll send them over to Wayne. And then February twelfth, you have your budget hearing, and that's at six thirty. Now remember, after your budget hearing is a school district, just a school board meeting. So you can, that's when you can do your vote. After you listen to the budget committee and they do their vote on the budget, then you can again vote on the budget if you want to change it as a board. And then Wayne will be at the budget hearing. That's where all the information, all the questions will be coming out. I'm going to say he will, he should probably be at the March seventeenth, which is your school district meeting, just in case people may come that didn't come to the budget hearing.
Yeah, I think it was about official, I think it's a big, it's a big money item.
Good deal.
And, and sometimes it's better to hear it from somebody other than a school board member, nobody should do it.
He definitely is going to come to one of them.
He said vote, yeah, he said he could come and vote if we need.
Yeah, so I'll let him, I'll confirm that with him again. In your openings, you have quite a few openings. You have three board, school board openings for three-year terms. All three are three-year terms. And then you have five openings on the budget committee. Two of those are three years, two of them are two years, and one of them is one year.
Is that, is that seven?
There's a seven board, and then your school board rep is your eighth member of that committee, voting member.
Yep.
And then the sign-up time for, for registering to take on the positions is January twenty-ninth to February seventh, until two thirty every day. So if anyone wants to sign up to be a board member or a budget committee, it's during that time. I do have the update on the, on the results for your support staff contract. And so the board can ratify that tonight if they so choose. On your agenda, you have that, actually, you have your support staff first under business requiring board action.
Yep.
And then, under continuing business, you have your warrant articles. So we did put in a number for your draft warrant articles that we will give you. So if you would like, you can go into non-public during the meeting and do your support staff discussion, and then come out and vote on it, and then continue your meeting with your warrant articles. But that does have to, the discussion has to be done in non-public.
Right.
I can't vote on that, so I don't need to go into non-public, right?
Right, you don't need to go into non-public, but you can, you can certainly listen to everything that's being said.
No, I can't vote.
Oh, you can't, oh, you're right, you can't.
Right, right. So, but you can listen to all the, we'll give you a packet.
Oh, okay.
And you'll be able to follow along and, and, you know, as a board member.
Yeah, I mean, now that it's done, then the information is, it's fine, you just can't vote.
Okay, I, I would say anything at all about it, or?
You can, you can.
I mean, just on behalf of the parents, or?
You can say, yeah, well, we go into non-public.
Okay. I'll ask, I'll ask those questions.
Based on the information that we're presenting.
Yes.
Right.
So you can do that, or sometimes you guys wait until the end, but, you know, there's nobody here, so you could probably just do that, go into non-public.
Sure.
Discuss it, and then we'll back out. Again, under continuing, you can put your basketball hoops in there if you'd like. And then the board will need to vote on the bottom-line budget as well as your warrant articles. And then you still have time to assign the warrant articles, so you have that to do on. But you, your bottom-line budget, just so we can give something to the budget committee, so they can work with it. But you can also change that number after the hearing on the twelfth of February.
Okay.
Okay, if you want it to match the budget committees, if theirs is different, you know, you guys can decide on that. But we need a number by a vote to put on the warrant articles. The draft warrant articles. That's it. Oh, the calendar. You have a calendar in your blue folder. We won't discuss tonight. It's still, we still, we're still going through another process. We still have to, the administration has to present and get input from the association. But this is a proposed calendar, and so we'll be, just put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. And what we've done is we've already contacted all the schools in the North Country, so we're all set with them as far as this goes. It's a couple of differences, but we're never going to match completely, but, so we've already talked to them about the, the calendar. So now it would just be the association if they have any input, you know, and we'll get that, and then at the next board meeting, we can decide. And that's it.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to use it. I know it's still in process, is the calendar quickly set up? So that we, we manage with the, the school that we send things to for vacation services?
Yeah, there's still a couple of schools that are starting after Labor Day, so there's a few days there.
I mean, sorry, like vacation-wise?
Oh, vacation-wise, yeah.
I remember one year we had-
Yeah, we're all different.
They were different, and our kids got no vacation in there.
So this time, yeah, we're all the same for vacations now.
Okay.
All right, Mark?
Hey, good evening. I feel like, I feel like we just met, so there's a whole lot of stuff going on. But, you know, the second quarter is ending on January twenty-fourth, so we'll be sending report cards home on the thirty-first. So look for a day or so afterwards for the parents to actually be receiving them. We invited a motivational speaker to come talk. This is through the ADAPT program. Carly and I have been working to talk with a gentleman, his name is Rob Kearney. He's a professional strong man, one of the smallest competitors out there. And so he's going to come and talk, and then he'll meet up with some of the Yalta kids afterwards. And have a little small group session with Carly and myself and him, so. And Kink Classic is happening tomorrow, so I'm sure everybody's excited about that. A lot of people are talking about it. So it's nice to have it rescheduled. And then we're pleased to partner with the Woodstock Station tomorrow for the poetry out loud competition, starts at five o'clock. Last I checked is-
It was Thursday.
Thursday. I'm, I'm sorry, Thursday. So, and last I heard, we had like twenty-one kids competing in it. I did kind of go through, I know Joe did as well, and listen to some of these kids perform their speeches, or their poems, sorry, not a speech. And it was very interesting for me. I hadn't had to listen to that before, and so I'm, I'm kind of excited about that as well. Preparations for Winter Carnival have begun, you know, the students or staff are really excited about that. And we're also moving forward with the mid-year end-of-year testing for middle school and elementary. And hopefully, teachers will have some of that data real soon and be able to use that to help form their instruction. That's about it, that's what I got written down.
Do you have any questions, Mark?
I'm going to find that over your table again.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
They have Thursday written down, just so you know. It's at the station. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. Committee reports, policy.
We've got a couple of things on the agenda for tonight for first reading and second reading. There, I think they were marked for the packet, so what they were. But, if you'll look around me, you'll see that that one is on for second reading. That's a legislative adjustment, basically, they, they want to make sure it's definitely legalized. The, I guess, the rare little things, everything that we are adding or changing. We made, there's a minor change to, from first reading to second reading on access to buildings. It says, access to school buildings in a pit-stake and grounds outside of our school hours should be limited to personnel whose work requires it. There was some concern with that overly shutdown, like people using the front field for sledding or the playground in the summertime, things like that. So we made that modification. And then the family leave act policy is, the adjustment was to the amount of hours that the employee had to work in order to qualify for FMLA leave or FMLA protection. And that's, again, statutory change. But I would make that a motion to accept these as, as they are, as they're considered.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody have any further questions or discussion regarding E C, E C A, E C A B, or G C, C D C? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? And that motion carries.
Yeah, so the first reading, there's, there were some changes that we adopted, a lot of the school or association policy, recommended policy. The, the one thing that we, the one sort of significant change that we made to that policy is with regards to misuse of computer network services and equipment. You'll see that we cross out misuse of, because I think we have policies that address appropriate use of computer stuff, and it's not necessarily, you know, somebody goes on to a, a website they shouldn't be on, it's not vandalism. It's, you know, it's a misuse of technology, and, and, you know, there's acceptable use agreements that we have with the kids. And they know what those are, and there's, there's punishments that address, or, or, you know, I guess remedies that address those violations separate from acts of vandalism. However, you know, deliberately tampering with network equipment or deliberately tampering with the actual physical computer is a different scenario, and that's what this is, you know, part of this is designed to address. But also, it's sort of a more comprehensive description of, you know, what vandalism is and the process by which it is addressed. Are you going to be able to sound on school buses? We had a pretty lengthy conversation about this because it's something that we don't currently have a policy on. What we have is essentially, we adopted, most, for the most part, the entire school board association policy. We did make, you know, we, we did make an adjustment in regarding notifying parents. So currently, we don't have any buses that use these, that have surveillance on them, the, the video and audio recordings. There is sort of foreseeable circumstances where if one of us breaks down, we're using a, a different bus. It might be a bus with that surveillance on there. We thought it was important for the superintendent or the administration to notify students, parents, students and parents when they, when they are going to be in a bus that's going to be audio visually recorded. But, you know, recognizing that there may be circumstances where that's not possible to notify in advance, and if we find out that morning and we're not using one of our buses, then, you know, there's, there's sort of a safety valve for that by noting that unless it's an urgent, an exigent circumstance, the district should notify parents of students utilizing bus transportation if cameras are being used on buses. So if we just, if, if our provider says this, you know, we're getting new buses, they're going to have these cameras, the expectation is that the commissioner is going to start looking out to help parents with new buses prior to that going into effect to say, look, from now on, the kids are going to be recorded, so they know. There's also legislative restrictions on how long those things can be kept, how, you know, what, what can be done with them. There's sort of limitations, things like you can't listen to the audio unless there's an incident and, you know, you're trying to do an investigation. So generally speaking, none of it can be even reviewed unless there's something that needs, that needs to be reviewed. And then, you know, everything has to be gone within ten days if there's not some specific reason why we're keeping it. So, and then it also limits the amount of people who can actually even review this stuff. So it's pretty limited. Again, most of it is school board's recommendation. E D C, what, what do we change on that? Is this one of the ones that we just kept our own policy?
I think we just kept this one.
Okay, so we're not even doing it without one.
No.
Yeah, so you have any word on that? That's our policy and our recommendation to keep our policy. The, there is some significant changes to the employee use of cellular telephones policy. You know, basically, there is sort of expectation that during educational periods or during instructional periods that, that the employee's cell phones are gonna be silenced and sort of have a site. You know, basically notifying folks that the violations will be addressed through the currently existing disciplinary policies. You know, and obviously a strict prohibition against tracking and using electronic devices. Emergency use, we address, obviously, in an emergency situation, we're always encouraged to use whatever, make their hands off their phone calls. And I think what we did was this, this sort of last piece, we adjusted some language in the use of the personal cell phones, communication devices. This is mostly adopted by the, from the school association policy, but we did make some, some minor adjustments to it. But basically, you know, people are strongly discouraged from using personal cell phones for, you know, for non-instructional purposes during school day. You know, with the concession that, that obviously there's periods of time where the teachers aren't in instructional periods and they're not, you know, having contact with the students and, you know, they can use their phone, their teacher's phone. So, you know, but the expectation is that your use, your personal use of your personal phone is not gonna interfere with your, with your level of volunteer obligations, obligations. So that is, that is the last one. Those are all for second reading. Or first reading, sorry. Those are first reading.
I'll accept the motion to move policy E C A C, E C A F, E D C, E D C A from first reading to second reading.
Uh, thanks, Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody have any further questions or discussion regarding those policies?
E D C, the one we're not changing, it's still as the way they're saying.
No, no, because we're not changing it.
But it should be, but it should be stamped with a new date though. It should, it should move, right?
It should still go over, yeah, because people may have some other.
Let's say it was reviewed on these days, so it should still go with it.
Sure.
Okay. Hearing done, all in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? And that motion carries. Thank you, Jay. Any, any other board, any other committees meet or have any information to share? Business requiring board action, staff nominations, recommendations and resignations. Okay, so I would like to pull the board to go to non-public, the discussion matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person whether they're a member of the school board. Jasmine?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I will?
Yes.
Gary, Vance, Brian? Thank you.